Now we're okay.
Yeah.
Okay, good, I'm glad. I do want to thank Jay for asking me to do this. Over the years, I've taught courses and pieces of courses in world religions. And I think I've told some of you, when I first started teaching, I started at Boston University. It was a humanities program, and it had a section on world religions. And they said, "Can you teach something on world religions?" I needed a job, so I said, "Sure." And started doing some work in that area, which I hadn't done before. I also want to thank Will and Holly for helping me. I am technologically challenged, and Will has been a great help, and Holly as well. Now, I have another friend. I would say probably most of you here know A.T. Waddell. And he and I had lunch a few days ago. And you know there are books on Finance for Dummies, Computer for Dummies. Perhaps you didn't know, I didn't know, but there is also the Koran for dummies and Islam for dummies. And A.T. thought I might need both of these. And so he brought them by today. I haven't had a chance to look at them, but if there are any questions you have, and I don't have the answer to, and that's quite possible, next week I'll have all the answers. But I would recommend a couple of books that I have read. Huston Smith, The World's Religions, is a good, accurate presentation. That's about 40 pages on Islam, 40 pages on Hinduism, on Buddhism, in similar ways. There's some things I don't fully like about the book, but that's true with any book. And Bernard Lewis is a distinguished scholar. The Crisis of Islam, that's another book. I'll be passing out notes, and I'll have this record. Let's begin. And some of this is going over what we did last week, but some fundamental theological similarities between Christianity and Islam. And if you're going to be dialoguing with someone, and you may be, just occurred to me a few years ago, well, it'd be quite a few years ago now, but there was a Muslim family in our preschool. And I remember Nadine Greenhill was teaching then and directing preschool, having a part of a Christmas celebration with that family. So you may think, "Well, I've never met a Muslim, and I never will," but you may, and you may have an opportunity to dialogue. So it's good to know what are some similarities? Where do you start? And of course, what are some differences? Well, Muslims, like Christians, like Jews, believe, and like Christians believe, that there is only one God. They're monotheists instead of polytheists. When we get to look at Hinduism, we'll see that at least popular Hindus have many, many gods. And if you have many, many gods, it's no big deal to include Jesus among them, among the hundreds. But Muslims, there is only one God, and God is personal. We share that with Muslims. And persons can have a personal relationship with God. God created the world. Not all world religions believe in creation. Christianity does, Judaism does, and of course, Christianity and Islam all do. And God has revealed himself to mankind through his infallible word. Now, we have some important differences about what is the infallible word, but Muslims believe that the Koran is the infallible word of God. We believe that about the scriptures, but we do believe in the infallible word. And they also believe there's a final judgment. And there's some other theological similarities. Muslims believe in evangelism. We do, they do. So they are aggressively attempting to recruit. And both Christians and Muslims, along with Jews, look to Abraham as the father of our faith. Thus, we are all spiritually related. Islam through Hagar, remember in the scripture, is Abraham's concubine from whom Ishmael came. Now, the Muslims say Hagar was not a concubine, she was a wife. But we are related. There are, and you might up to this point, say, "Well, what's the big fuss?" Well, theologically, there are some important differences. Christianity affirms that mankind has fallen into sin, Genesis 3. Islam doesn't recognize a fall. Islam refers to sin as forgetfulness. Now, I can go on. I forget a lot of things, and I forget a lot of things in the scripture and the teaching of the Lord. But we believe that the problem is bigger than forgetfulness. But what about Islam in Jesus? Jesus is a great prophet, according to the Muslims, and a supernatural being, but human and not God. They affirm the virgin birth of Christ. They go so far as to say Adam and Jesus were the only humans created directly by God. Thus, they have a very high view of Jesus. So if you're beginning a conversation, you might begin it there, although there's going to be very important differences. I have an anecdote about that. International Institute for Christian Studies, now called Global Scholars, place people all over the world. And one thing they did a number of years ago, sent a lady and another team, another portion of the team, to Afghanistan. Now, her degree was in education, so she didn't go as a theologian. She went as an expert on education to talk about the educational system. But there was a gentleman who, before he would listen to anything she had to say, wanted to know, would she affirm, "There is no God but Allah." And she tried to slough that off, but he was persistent. "There is no God but Allah." We weren't going to get anywhere in the conversation. Well, what she did was that, "Well, I can't really do that, because my mother would be offended if I did anything that seemed to contradict my Christian faith and reverence for Jesus." Motherhood is good. And there was another gentleman who had more prestige or standing in the group, and he said, "Well, we know that the Koran says great things above Jesus, that he is an important prophet." So with the affirmation of motherhood and Jesus being an important prophet, they were able to move on in the conversation. But Jesus is not God, according to Islam. Sin and salvation? Judgment is based on good works, not forgiveness, based on Christ's sacrifice on the cross. That's essential. It's not just a minor debate like between the Lutherans and the Baptists, Baptists and the Presbyterians. Quoting here, John 1:1-3, "In the beginning was the Word, and the Word was with God, and the Word was God. He was with God in the beginning; through him all things were made, and without him nothing was made that has been made." And in 1:14, "And the Word became flesh, and made His dwelling among us." Very clear in the first chapter of John. Jesus is God, and He came in the flesh and dwelt among us. From a Muslim point of view, this is both silly and blasphemous. How could a man be God? And so when they hear Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, they say, "Well, you guys are really polytheists. You've got at least three gods." Say here, the above verses affirm several things that Islam denies. Christ is not just a man. He's not just a prophet, even a very great prophet. The New Testament version, view of salvation. "We are not saved by good works, but by faith in Christ's atoning work on the cross." Ephesians 2:89, "For it is by grace you are saved through faith, and that not of yourselves; it is the gift of God, and not of works, lest any man should boast." Now, these differences are absolutely essential. If we're dialoguing with a Muslim or witnessing to a Muslim, we are affirming something which they are denying, and it's absolutely essential. I want to talk a little bit about the rise of Islam in historical perspective. Muhammad died in 632. And after about 20 or 30 years, he was the ruler of all Arabia. And the expansion of Islam, really, really incredible. Within 100 years after his death, his followers had conquered Armenia, Persia, Syria, Palestine, Iraq, North America, and Spain. In 733, the Muslims were defeated at the Battle of Tours. Now, how many of you have heard about the Battle of Tours? Okay.
I've heard about it. Don't ask me to tell you about it.
Okay, you're not ready for a quiz on the... Well, have you got that next film slide? Tours is in southern France. And you can see here, this is Islam about 750, that's a little bit after the Battle of Tours. But that's how much, you can see the dark, that's how much was controlled. And then Iberia there, that's all of Spain. And the Muslims were coming up from Spain into France. They were superior militarily. And if that battle was won by a distant relative of Will's, I just found that out today, Charles Martel, Martel the Hammer, and he was the grandfather of Charmaine. You may have heard of Charmaine, or not, as the case may be. But Charmaine, ruler of the Franks. But the Muslims had cavalry. And Martel and his Frankish, or as the French forces did it. But they were able to entice the Muslims to attack a fixed position. Now, this took a lot of discipline, because he had, Martel gave strict orders. Whatever you do, when they retreat, don't chase them. We stand here. And they had fixed positions. They had put stakes in the ground, and the cavalry came and charged against that and were defeated. If Tours had gone the other way, all of us might be either Muslims or Christians living in Muslim, under Muslim rule. So the whole destiny of Europe was at stake here. And God's providence, obviously, worked. Muslims last lost at Tours, and that was sort of the high point of their attack going into Europe. Very critical battle. Now, you've heard of the Battle of Tours, and you know it was important, because you know you're not Muslims, nor are you living in a Muslim country. There are lots and lots of battles. Not all of them are important in world history, but this one, most commentators agree that it was very important. But it tells you something about the tremendous expansion. We're talking a little over 100 years here. And we're talking about Muhammad, who is born into a trader family. He's not born into a warrior family, but he had tremendous military ability.
So Dick, for those areas where you're showing us here, when those areas were taken over militarily, were people given the choice of converting or...
Yes and no. I mentioned that this book by Huston Smith, which generally I like, it's a good, safe, accurate treatment of the various religions. But it is a very kind re-treatment of everybody. Muslims regard Christians and Jews as people of the book. We're also descended from Abraham, just as they are. So in Spain, for instance, the Jews, under Islamic rule, had probably more freedom and less persecution than when the Muslims were driven out of Spain and the Christians took But initially, there were some Jewish tribes in Mecca, and they had a choice of being converted or losing their life. So there's a very mixed record. If you read the Muslim interpretation, no one is converted by force, but that's historically just not the case. That's why I say yes and no. And that gets us into the issue raised by, what we deal with in the next slide, Islam and the meaning of jihad. Jihad can mean moral striving. And it can mean a holy war and military conquest. And it can mean both. In war, and certainly war as the Muslims are, there was a great deal of moral striving. I think I told you last time about my experience giving a talk at Linnor Rhein on Luther's doctrine of calling and how this related to education. And at the end of the talk, this was a board of visitors, at the end of the talk, this gentleman stood up and said he liked my talk very much, and you're always glad when anybody likes, professes to like what you say. And then he added, "It reminded me of jihad." And his interpretation, this also, and I think I mentioned it to you last time, this guy is the, I think, president and CEO of Ethan Allen Furniture Company. And Ethan Allen and the Green Mountain Boys were heroes in the Revolutionary War. But he was interpreting jihad as moral striving. He was not affirming that he was in favor of a holy war. And there are Muslims who would profess, "It's about moral striving. It's not about military conquest." Probably, however, the predominant meaning, not just in our eyes, but historically, is jihad is about military conquest. There are some strong prohibitions for the kind of things that ISIS is doing. But the Muslims didn't, in a little over 100 years, conquer that much territory simply by holding things equivalent to a Billy Graham rally. And if you're a Christian or a Jew, even if your religion is tolerated, there are certain restrictions. You're not a full-class citizen. Now, Islam and separation of church and state. The answer there is fairly simple. They don't believe in, historically, they just do not recognize this separation. We are to live out the implications of our faith in every area of life, and that includes political. Now, I think we would agree with that. I think as a Christian, I have a responsibility as a citizen. What I believe as a Christian can affect how I vote, or whether I run for office, or how I serve. But we are not, would not argue for a control, a religious control by the state, although we can point historically, and you can even do this with respect to Will's ancestor, Charmaine, who established, reestablished what was called the Holy Roman Empire, the grandson of Charles Martel, who won the Battle of Tours. The Holy Roman Empire was established by force. So Christians have certainly used force. But we have come to affirm, certainly we would affirm, separation of church and state. Islam in many places is a minority, and of course, where there are a minority and unable to dominate the political, religious, and cultural landscape, they accept that. But this is not the ideal. The ideal would be an Islamic world, which might tolerate diversity, but would control military culture, et cetera. Some remarks about the supremacy of Islam over the West. Historians recognize that historically, Islamic culture, for hundreds of years, their empire was politically, militarily, intellectually, scientifically, architecturally, and culturally superior to the West. If you read what they accomplished, speaking as a Western, they were better than us, by I think this is part of the tension. When you're talking to a Muslim, we have a short span, a short attention span with respect to history. And the other one gets, maybe the more that's, you know, 20 years ago was ancient history. Muslims, and in other cultures, not just Muslims, have a historical consciousness that goes back hundreds, thousands of years. We're Americans. We're new. We're new. We stand for progress, and we don't worry about what happened in the past. I mean, that's generally our cultural attitude. You're talking with a Muslim, they're thinking in terms of 100 years ago, 1,000 years ago, which is kind of foreign to us. And there was a period when, by any objective measure, Islamic culture was superior to Western culture. This is hard for us to understand, it's hard for me to understand that attitude. Now, what else? So when you're talking to a Muslim, they're saying, "Why do you think we are better than we are?" Because I thought Muslims, those are a bunch of people riding in deserts on camels. They were philosophically, happens to be my field, this is an aside, but illustrates when two of the greatest philosophers, Greek philosophers, Plato and Aristotle. And most of Aristotle's works had been lost in the West, but preserved in Islamic countries. And so when Western scholars wanted to study Aristotle, which is Greek, they had to learn from the Muslims. Now, when they visit America, what do they see? Imperialism. "We've conquered. We look down. We cut up the area." And hedonism. Now, if you're not familiar with the term hedonism, hedonism is the view that pleasure is the good. Now, it's not the view that pleasure is good, we all agree pleasure is good. I hope no one here is against pleasure. But that pleasure is the ultimate good. I think you can make the case that that's typical of our culture, not typical of any people in this room. We don't think pleasure is the good. Serving the glory of God is the ultimate good. The Westminster Confession says, "What the chief end of man is to glorify God and enjoy Him forever, and enjoy is not physical sensual pleasure." But they see our culture as hedonistic. Thank you, you may not agree with this, that's okay. But if you watch much of our television, it seems to me that you get sex and violence. And when we get bored with sex and violence, we go from the violence and sex. Now, this is maybe a point of contact. We are not first Westerners, we're first Christians. And we don't approve of everything that goes on in our culture. And we could share that if we were dialoguing with a Muslim. Something else, this is an anecdote, as some of you know, Nancy and I taught in Romania for a semester, and then in Prague for a semester. But in Romania, all of my students had seen more American movies than I had, way more. And they all believed if they could get to America for a year or two, they would be rich. I tried to tell them, "Well, that isn't necessarily going to work that way, guys," but they were convinced. And then, once they got rich, they would come back to Romania with their newfound wealth. But what if most of what you knew about America, you learned from Hollywood? What would your vision of, and you believed that was it, what would your vision be? So, we are imperialistic, we control, and we are committed, above all, to pleasure. A few things to be said about this. When you're comparing our religions, Islam was founded by Muhammad as a religious and military community. Muhammad died a successful leader. Christ died on the cross at the hands of the Romans. Christianity grew up under the rule of the Roman pagan empire. That's a fundamental difference in our consciousness. Yes, there's the promise, we read the Book of Revelation, and there will be ultimate judgment, but Jesus, although the Romans may be crucified, and because they viewed him as a potential rebel, Jesus clearly was not bent on overthrowing the Roman Empire, if you want to do a change on the term. Jesus was most concerned about a jihad, a war against the sin, in our hearts and souls. So our history is different. It wasn't until the Edict of Toleration, now, who's heard about the Edict of Toleration? Heard about toleration and edicts? In 313, Constantine decided, there were so many Christians, that the best way to unify the empire, he needed to not persecute the Christians anymore, but allow them, provided they would become good servants in the empire, allow them to be free. And so he enlisted them. But that was 313. You don't read that in the New Testament. In 381, the Emperor Theodosius declared that Christianity was the religion of the Roman Empire. Now, that sounded pretty good. But in 410, some 30 years later, Rome was sacked by the pagans. And that precipitated one of the great theological works by St. Augustine, which he wrote between 410 and his death in 432, a book called The City of God. And The City of God made a clear distinction between the Kingdom of God and the Kingdom of this world. So Muslims merged these, and we, for a long time, despite Will's ancestor, Chalmaine, but for a long time, we have this sharp distinction between political, military control and the Kingdom of God, the Church. Now, what that meant, if America became subjected to rule by the Russians, which was somewhat of a fear, that wouldn't be, that would be a defeat of America, but not a defeat of the Kingdom of God. Muslims are having a tension there, that it's not clear how they can resolve, or how we can be resolved with them. I intended to offer more time for questions or comments. As Jay mentioned, Reggie Longkaya will be here next week. There's a whole movement known as Black Muslims. But how many of you, anybody read the autobiography of Malcolm X? What was the, Jay just went...
Farts.
Farts. Malcolm X was converted to a brand of Islam in America that was racist. Went to Mecca and discovered that real Islam wasn't racist. It couldn't be about race, it couldn't be about black people having their brand of religion. And he was eventually killed, but by some of the so-called Black Muslims. I'll be interested to hear where Reggie was in this whole discussion. I really look forward to hearing it. Thanks.
Let's express our appreciation to Dick.